Good evening, Livonia. We will start tonight's study meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance offered by Councilman Rob Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan. Tonight is a study meeting. No votes will take place this evening. They will receive motions for either an approving, a denying, or a referral to a committee. And those motions will be voted on on June 27th at the regular meeting. At this time, we will note that we have two members absent this evening. Ms. McIntyre is attending to a community event, and Mr. Barr was here for the regular, but he also had to leave to attend a different event. So at this time, we're going to go to audience communication. If anybody in the audience has anything to address the council that is not on the agenda this evening, we ask you to come to the podium up here at this time. It appears there is no audience communication, so we will start with the agenda. Item number one is a block party request from Amy Ashton to be held on Saturday, July 2nd, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. with a rain date of Sunday, July 3rd, 2022, on Alois Street from Plymouth Road South until it ends. Ms. Ashton?
Yes.
Please come up to the podium. Tell us your name and your address, and tell us about your event, please.
I'm Amy Ashton. Our address is 11860 Alois Street in Livonia. We're just planning a block party. We've had kids for the first time in the neighborhood, and we just moved in about a year ago. Everyone seems fairly excited about it. So just a Fourth of July weekend, patriotic event. Lots of kids, lots of fun, bounce house, face paint, that type of thing.
Nice. Are you aware of our neighborhood grant program?
No.
Okay, so the city has a program where the city will sponsor up to $500 for such events.
Oh, nice.
To maybe pay for the bounce house or something like that. Some might want to take that to note for future block parties.
Truly.
Do we have any motions from the council, Mr. Donovan?
I have a question. Are we invited?
Yeah. It'll be a good time, yeah.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
I see no objections. Any audience communication on this matter? I see none. What this means is being on consent is we will vote on it at the next meeting, but it's all but assured to pass, so you do not have to return.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. Good luck with the block party.
Have as much fun as we do.
I think these meetings are quite fun.
Yes.
For some people. Item number two, block party from Kate Dobson to be held on Saturday, July 16, 2022, from 12:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. with a rain date of July 17th on Sherwood Street between Williams and Comstock Streets. Is Ms. Dobson here?
Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
Everything seems to be in order on this. I would ask for an approving resolution on consent if we may.
Anybody from the council? Any further comment? Any audience communication on this matter? We have a consent for item number two. Item number three is a block party from Gina Tucker to be held on Saturday, August 13, 2022, from 1:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. on Ellen Drive from the intersection of Edgewood Street and Gary Lane to the intersection of Edgewood and Roycroft Streets. Is Gina Tucker here? Please, when I begin to read off your item, if you're here for it, please start to make your way to the podium. Oh, please. I'm just saying for everybody else. As I start to read things, just come on up. Good evening, ma'am. Tell me your name for the record, please.
Gina Tucker.
Okay, what's your event about?
Block party. Same thing that the last lady was saying. Face painting, barbecue. We have a lot of new neighbors, and we want to get to know them.
Okay. Any motions from the council?
Council President.
Mr. McCullough?
I'll offer an approving for consent. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks.
And, yeah, please keep it up. Hopefully, see you next year.
The grant you were speaking about?
Yes.
Where did we get information on that?
It's on the city website.
Okay, perfect.
So it's a really great, somebody really intelligent thought of this thing.
Yeah.
Why don't you just give it in?
No, it's a great community asset. You can use it for block parties or many other things, so please look into it. Thank you. Good luck with your party.
Thank you.
Is there any audience communication on item number three? I see none. We'll move on to item number four. A request to waive the city's noise ordinance to erect and to erect signs at reference locations. This comes to us from Wafi Barshini for the festival chairperson at the Basilica of St. Mary's in connection with their 14th Annual Michigan Fun Fest on Thursday, August 11th through Sunday, August 14th in the rear parking lot of 1810 Merriman Road. Good evening. Please identify yourself.
Wafi Barshini, St. Mary Church, behalf of Father George, address 1800, 1810 Merriman Road, Livonia, Michigan.
Yes, sir.
And I'll be speaking a little too. So Freddie Sackler from St. Mary's Church, address 1810 Merriman Road, Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you, gentlemen. Can you tell us?
So actually, this is a little different than the Fun Fest. Every year in August, St. Mary's celebrates the Door Mission of St. Mary. It goes August 12th through August 14th. This year, similar to what they did last year, they're going to have a festival, small festival, on the church parking lot to benefit and honor the Door Mission of St. Mary's. We are asking for approval for a noise experience. They're going to have music, some small bounce houses, no carnival rides, and maybe a petting farm. So a smaller scaled festival, and we are asking for your permission. Wafi is my successor. This year, we won't be doing the Fun Fest, and we hope and see where the future will take us on that. But in regards to the Door Mission Festival, Wafi will be, I will be behind him, making sure everything's done according to your rules and plans and the fire department, but he will be the leader for all the fun it has.
But it's not going to be the Fun Fest, so he's not worthy of running the Fun Fest.
He is worthy of running the Fun Fest.
So, listen, Mr. Sackler, thank you very much.
Yes.
At this time, number one, so I presume no fireworks, correct?
There will be no fireworks.
And you're requesting a noise waiver as well?
Correct.
What hours are you looking for here? Because I know that this has been brought up by neighbors in the past to be...
They're looking for 11:00 p.m. on Friday, 12:00 p.m. on Saturday, and 10:00 p.m. on Sunday. They will not be operating on Thursday, different than the festival typically. And we find that, I think last year, my family was well-hidden, like I think most, and unfortunately, there was a problem at the end of the night where the music continued on past the deadline by a certain amount of time. I don't know the details because I didn't know about it until six months later. Nonetheless, that will not happen this year. So we've always closed at 10:00 on Thursdays, 11:00 on Friday, 12:00 on Saturday, and 10:00 on Sunday, and we'd ask that you continue that. The problem is with the festival is that the ability for it to benefit the church requires you to serve the people, and the people just appear to always come around 7:00, 8:00, and, you know, it's always a later crowd.
Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. President. So you're not going to have the Fun Fest, and may I ask why?
So we were nervous for COVID. Of course, you can ask why. We were nervous for COVID for two years, so we took a break because we were worried about the expense of the festival in relation to the revenue. You know, as you all know with the spree, it cost a lot of money to put on one of those events. And we felt that the community was falling apart a little bit, so because of COVID. So we're doing a little bit to try to build back the community on a smaller scale and give the members of the church attention a little bit. And then we would hope, and I hope and I believe that the entire city will reach out and help convince the spark to ignite again for the Michigan Fun Fest.
Okay. And if I may continue, Mr. Chair, does that mean that the ban will end at midnight on those particular evenings or...?
The ban will end at 11:00 on Friday.
Okay.
The ban will end at 11:59 on Saturday, and the ban will end at 10:00 o'clock on Sunday, 9:59.
Okay, because I think, as the chair pointed out, we, as you are aware and sensitive to, I know, the noise levels, et cetera. I'm going to ask for an approving resolution, Mr. Chair, and see where we go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for what St. Mary's does for our community. We love you guys. Father George and the community has been a big partner in Livonia for many, many years, and I echo some of my colleagues' concerns, right? I mean, we have to be good neighbors, right? Our neighbors next door that live in the homes 24 hours a day, you know, that they want to be a part of St. Mary's, but they also want their peace and tranquility. And City Council, we try to balance that. We try to make sure that we're our partners in the religious community or people that are hosting block parties, residents in general that are participating in fun, right? We want to have activities. We want to get together, especially in the religious community. But at the same time, we want to make sure our residents that live nearby can also, if they don't want to participate, you know, they can be happy as well. One of the questions I remember, we look back in the past, was the pointing of the speakers, right? When you talk about noise pollution, are we going to make sure that, looking at your diagram here, and thank you for sending us this packet, it's very helpful, thank you, are we going to make sure that the speakers are pointed away from the homes so that it minimizes any noise pollution towards the neighborhood to the north?
We're going to do that, and we're also going to, there's an ability to bring a sound system person back that is on the more expensive level, but he'll be able to regulate the sound from this side of, the outside of the festival. So hopefully, we will point in a better direction, and we will also do technical things that can help not have that problem again. And, you know, we do love our neighbors, and a lot of times, the festival, for years, has been about our neighbors. And I know that there's probably lots of them out there that will miss the Fun Fest for a little bit. So I would, and I'm confident a lot of them will come and enjoy this too.
And then for signage, are you, do you guys anticipate putting signs out a week or two in advance to kind of let neighbors know that are close by, hey, there is this event coming up Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Be wary of upcoming noises and whatnot?
We weren't going to put signage, but I think what we can do, which we've done many years, and Wafi, you have no problem doing this, you guys will, we take a little card, and we go hand-deliver it to the individuals down one street and the back street, inviting them and letting them know that we're having the festival.
Great. That'd be very nice, and thanks for being sensitive to the neighbors. Appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Hundred percent. And we apologize to any of the neighbors from last year who are watching today. We appreciate you, and we do our best to compromise.
Well, we heard about it, so I don't want to hear about it again. And I hope those cards you're handing out to the neighbor are going to have your cell phone number on them. Mr. Sackler?
Actually, okay, I will put my cell phone like I do every year. Most of them have my cell phone number. I'm surprised I didn't get a call last year, but...
All right. So at this time, we have an approving for consent. You've been made aware of some concerns from past instances. Do we have any audience communication in regards to this? Gentlemen, we have audience communication. Mr. Sackler?
I will step aside.
Do you mind?
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Paul Condon, 3115 Hillbrook in Livonia, and we are 601 feet away from the speakers when they're put up there, which, just for your information, is the same distance from the center of this building to the center of Five Mile, so we're pretty close. Couple of questions that I have, maybe through the chair. One of the things I would object to is the extension to 11:59 on Saturday night. Personally, I guess I wonder how much is really accomplished in that last hour, because they never do, rarely do they stop on time. Another comment is that we've never, I've lived there 40-some years now, and I don't ever recall getting a card with anybody's name or a contact or anything of that nature, and I don't know that my neighbors have on Hillbrook. They may be, and I may be incorrect, but they might just be going around on Merriman and the streets across to the west there. I understand, and like you and like they want to be a good neighbor, so do I, and I do not begrudge them having a festival. We understand that they have a need for that. But we just ask for a little more consideration and control on the volume of the music. The type of music is absolutely fine, no objection to any of that, except the volume. When your windows rattle 600 feet away from an event, you know, that's a bit invasive. So those would be my comments. I do appreciate the time, if I may address Mr. Donovan direct, that he has given me on this particular issue. He's been very attentive to the needs, I think, of our neighborhood. So we thank you very much, and I don't know if that'll have any sway with what you do, but if they could adjust the timing, that'd be great, and if they certainly could adjust the volume, that'd even be better. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sackler, you've heard everything tonight, and I think you are well apprised of the situation. We have a motion for consent approving this, but I don't want this to be an issue next year when you come back for this, okay?
I apologize to the neighbor, and sometimes people aren't home, but I've gotten to know one of the neighbors throws a party every year in their backyard, and I walk by on the John Deere, and I know the ones on the curve.
Well, let's not talk about that.
Point is, I apologize.
Maybe give Mr. Condon your cell phone number, and we'll call the next item.
Done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other audience communication? Okay, we have none. Item number five, appointment of Mr. Christopher Bolvin to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Councilwoman Kathleen McIntyre for a three-year term which will expire on July 12 of 2025.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Bowman has been on the zoning board in Kathleen, or Councilwoman McIntyre's absence. I think somebody needs to make a motion on this, so I would be happy to do that in her absence. He's very qualified and very knowledgeable person, and well-deserved. A reappointment.
That's an approving. Anybody else from the council? I'm going to ask for that to be on the regular. I think ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, is one of the most crucial appointments we have in the city, and I think it's important for people to come once every three years and talk to us as a council. So any audience communication on that? Item number five? I see none. Item number six is the appointment of Timothy Cliz to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This comes to us from Councilman Brandon McCullough for a three-year term expiring on July 12 of 2025. Mr. Cliz, your name, well, tell us your story, sir.
Sure. Thank you, President Jolly, and I appreciate Mr. McCullough putting me forward to continue. This will be my third term. Ran for council in 2015, was not successful, was appointed to the zoning board in May of 2016, and have been serving ever since. I enjoy the work. I am currently the secretary of the ZBA, so you have the president, vice president, secretary, so it's a board executive position, I guess, within the ZBA. And it's good because having a consistency there, we had, I think, our president, when I started, had been there 20 years, Matt Henze, and so he had this great historic knowledge of things in the city and what we had done and stuff. And then when he left, it was like, whoa, you know, this is a new era. And so we're in that new era now. Mr. Morgan was with us briefly and got to see how things are done, and we have some new folks that are on board. So I think it's good to keep that consistency. I've had very excellent attendance there, and I really enjoy doing the work. Work with Mr. Fisher a lot and the other attorneys from the law department, and just happy to be able to continue the mission.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to offer an approving for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We have an approving for consent. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Cliz, thanks for stepping up again to serve. You've been doing a lot of great things for our community. I appreciate it, and I'd like to let all the residents know that if you have a neighbor with a fence that is annoying you, you got to bother that guy for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I still remember it was probably back in 2019, we had spoke about your experience and how much you, you know, loved serving on the ZBA. And, you know, having this opportunity to appoint you is my honor. Honestly, you do bring a wealth of knowledge to the community. The one thing that stands out, I must point out, is you did put in here that you were part of the Hoover PTA skating chair from 2008 to 13th, and I think that's really what sold it all to me. But all serious aside, your resume, you know, you know your resume. Graduate from Detroit Mercy, U of M Dearborn, you mentor young attorneys through the Law School and the Skate Bar, Michigan Mentor Program. And again, it's my honor to have you as my pick, so thank you for serving again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I could add a lot of other things. I would never say, when you're talking about Mr. Cliz, I would never say the only interesting thing. There are many interesting things we could get into. But you have an approving for consent. Thank you for your service. Great attorney, great representative of our community. Any audience communication? I see none. You're all set. You do not have to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great night, guys.
You too.
Take care.
Item number seven, a waiver petition, 2022030208 submitted by Tizio Architects on behalf of True Heal Veterinary Clinic, requesting to operate a vet clinic at 27488 Five Mile Road on the north side of Five Mile between Inkster and Foch Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 13. Mr. Tizio, please tell us about this project.
Bonne nuit.
I want to give you a couple of...
Some handouts.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just hand them to Mr. Zalinski, and they'll pass them out here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tizio.
Ben Tizio, Tizio Architects, 19815 Farmington Road. We're here before you tonight to seek an approving resolution to modify the existing building at the location into a veterinary clinic. The exterior of the building, minimal work, other than some freshening up. There will be no additions. We're not painting the brick. If we have to paint the block, we will do that. One of the things that we didn't put on the drawings is that there's a masonry fence on the east side of that that is leaning over about four inches. That will be coming down. It's not required under the ordinance, so we will be taking that down. The clinic is that, it's a clinic designed for one veterinary doctor there, one assistant, and a receptionist. This is not a mill-type of operation. The doctor is not here tonight because he's working, and he's working in one of the mills, and he doesn't want to do that anymore. He wants his own private clinic to be able to control the practice that he's giving to the animals. So the building is not expected to be expanded at all. Again, interior renovation. We're going to be adding a x-ray room and also an enclosure for a break room. The front half of the building roughly will be for the public area. The back is for the employees. There is not a trash dumpster there, and we don't plan on putting there one, but there is going to be a trash rollaway inside the back door, and that will be rolled out on the day that the trash will be picked up. So that's not going to be an issue. There are not going to be barking dogs. This is a clinic. This is not a kennel operation. This is where they take the animals to be checked out, medical conditions, whatever they may be. So there's going to be three employees there, and we have four parking spots in front, which, we have four exam rooms should be enough to take care of the clientele and the customers.
Thank you, Mr. Tizio.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mr. Tizio, is there, and it might have been in the packet, forgive me if I didn't see it, are we going to have animals overnight? Stain?
No, there is not. Maria, you want to?
Yes, no, there will be no animals...
Identify yourself, please. What's your name?
My name is Maria Petrenko. I am the owner of the building and the manager of the clinic. So there will be no animal stain overnight. It's a come-in and come-out kind of hospital. If an animal will need hospitalization overnight or more complex surgery, they will be referred out to an emergency hospital or somebody who can keep them overnight.
No, thank you for that. And then, Mr. Tizio, I know we had, you've been doing great work around the community, and it's appreciated and it's noted. I know we've had a few petitioners in front of us over the last couple of years. Do you have a spot, you know, one of the people that I know the residents' concerns will be, you know, you have an animal, you got to let it go outside. Are you going to have a little bathroom area, a little piece of grass or green space? Are you planning on any of that?
That's not anticipated.
Okay.
So there is some landscaping proposed, so there is an area of grass on the front. I mean, generally, when an animal is brought in, they're, you know, they're there for surgery, and they're places inside the hospital where they can relieve themselves.
Okay.
But because it's not a kennel, and it's not a daycare, they're not staying there over long periods of time, there's not really going to be expected, like...
You know, overall, I looked at the plan. Again, you're taking something that is not fully dilapidated, but you're going to be reviving something, and that's appreciated. I will recommend, and just maybe you could look into it a little further, of this little grass area. I totally understand that, you know, while you might not have people walking out, but as people take their animals back to the car, I know those neighbors would appreciate if you did have something there, just in case, that way...
Absolutely.
Being good stewards.
We'll look at that. Thank you.
One of our big things in some of the other operations, we really don't want it to smell like a veterinary hospital.
Absolutely. Yeah, so that, I seen some innovative ideas, and this, honestly, just even running through it quickly, appreciate the hard work in that. I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent if there are no objections.
Thank you. Ms. Toy?
Thank you very much. If I may, to the petitioner, it's a nice improvement in that area. You're not doing a lot, but simple is a lot of times nice, and I really appreciate it. That's an older area of our community down in that area, business-wise as well. I concur with my colleague, Mr. McCullough. I have more than enough animals in my house, and when they go to the vet, I mean, they are, you're shaking your head with me, yeah. They get out of the car, in, out, whatever, and they smell others, I guess, you know, animals, that is, and so they relieve themselves. So it behooves you to, I think, have something there, and I think you agree with that. So, and we appreciate having a vet again. I just had my cat at the vet, and I had to wait almost two weeks to get in, and then they don't let you in right now because of, you know, COVID and all the good stuff that's happening. So we appreciate, you know, another vet in the area. This is great. How long has he been in practice?
He has been, so he's been in practice, I think, for, in this area, for a total of nine years and 15 years total.
And he probably went to Michigan State, of course, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Interesting. I understand nationwide, there's a shortage of 40,000 veterinarians.
Yeah.
It's like, seriously?
Well, thank you for picking Livonia. We appreciate it.
Thank you. No, thank you for being nice. I do have to say, we've tried a couple of other cities, like, when just looking for property, and that would be like, I would just call a city council or planning, and they would be like, absolutely no, we're not rezoning it. So and when I called Livonia, they were like, yeah, sure, come on and talk to us. So thank you. Guys, it's my first, it's my first kind of introduction to Livonia, and it's been nothing but a joy. I'm not trying to score any points.
I think Mr. Donovan's...
It's okay.
You scored a point, so good job.
Thank you.
A few questions in terms of the grass space. It does look like there are green space. It does look like there is some grass, looking at the plans in the front of the building, to the south of the building. While I can't exactly say how much, it looks like there's adequate space up front. Question is, in the back of the building, to the north, there's not a wall that separates that parking lot, correct?
Correct. There's a cross-access...
There is a cross-access agreement?
Agreement between the neighbors, so they'll come in off the side street, go through the neighbor's property to park on the, what do we have, five spots in the back there?
So if the parking...
But there is a wall to the multi-residential on the east of the property lot.
So, and that was my next question, is in the south of the building, in the front of the building, next to Five Mile, is there also a wall that separates that?
There is a wall on the front of the building, but we're going to be taking it down. It is leaning already.
Okay.
So it's time for it to come down.
So with that being said, there's even more green space now if a dog did have to relieve itself.
We're not saying that.
There's a big field there, and it doesn't look like anything is going to happen for a couple of years, maybe. So we've got that.
Well, thank you for coming to Livonia, purchasing a building, and investing money into it, and offering a business for residents. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Tizio.
So I have a question. So you plan on utilizing city trash services, correct?
No, I think that that's going to be a...
Well, you mentioned there's no dumpster. How do you plan the trash to leave the property?
Well, they would hire, just like I do in my properties, we would hire Priority or Green for Life to come by and pick up.
Okay, so the medical waste is not going to be an issue?
No, there's no medical waste. If there is, it's very minor, and that's a special pickup.
Okay, sounds good. You have an approving for consent. Do we have any audience communication? I see none. So you're all set. You do not have to come back. Good luck. Thank you for the improvement.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Item number nine... Item number nine is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, two zero two two zero four zero two one two, submitted by Area Towing and Recovery Inc., requesting to operate a vehicle at one two...
It's on the one one.
Yeah, you hear that, it's the wrong one.
Eight, jumper eight.
Yeah.
Number eight.
Number eight.
So, I... Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Excuse me, item number eight, let me start there. Waiver petition from the Planning Commission, two zero two two zero three zero two one one, submitted by Livonia Veterinary Hospital, requesting to expand their facility at one three three eight nine, one three three nine one and one three three nine three Farmington Road on the west side of Farmington between the CSX Railroad right-of-way and Schoolcraft Road in the northeast quarter of Section twenty-eight. Good evening.
Hello.
What's your name and...
Dean DeVance with DeVance Custom Construction, four three six five zero Utica Road, Sterling Heights, Michigan. I'm the builder.
Okay. Mr. Teramina, are you going to walk us through this?
I'll do it quickly, yes. So, Livonia Veterinary Clinic is located just north of the DPW's new administrative offices. This is that clinic that's been there for some time. It's a one-story building that's about twenty-two hundred square feet. The plan is to expand that by adding another three thousand square feet to the building on its northwest side. Property is split-zone currently, it has both C-two and M-one zoning. The industrial zoning is where the addition is going. The council is in the process of rezoning, that first reading was given on September ninth of twenty nineteen. So, the building addition would bring the total size up to about fifty-three hundred square feet. This would allow for additional exam rooms, as well as a pharmacy, a food store, as well as an employee lounge. The main customer entrance into the building would be relocated to the addition. There would be a vestibule added as well. The building does meet all of the required building setbacks. It also meets all of the city's parking regulations. Dumpster is shown up the back of the building, that would be adequately screened. Additional trees and landscaping are being provided to the site. Planning Commission reviewed this and recommended at least one additional tree along Farmington Road, which the petitioner was happy to accommodate. The addition itself is going to complement the existing building with the use of similar brick. Limestone would be added, both to the existing building as well as to the new addition. You can see the renderings down below, peak roof is shown on the addition. Ultimately, when the addition is completed and they can go in and renovate the existing building, a peaked matching peak roof would be added to that portion of the structure. So, overall, a plan that was well received by the Planning Commission and recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, anybody from the council? Any questions or comments or motions?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
If I may, the petitioner or to the fixer-upper person here, I want to compliment you, this building's been there since like the fifties. My parents took our animals there, I remember that as a kid. So, before most of these guys were born anyhow, but anyways, that's okay. This is a vast improvement. I'm glad our planning department is, you know, helping and is right on top of everything in this city. They do awesome work. So, we appreciate you coming to Livonia and the veterinarian that's here now and, you know, again, we need these vets around for these animals. Livonians love their animals. I mean, you go door-knocking in this community and there's all kinds of dogs and cats and we're very fortunate. So, thank you for being part of our city and I'm going to offer an approving. If I may, Mr. Chair, and I'll leave it to you to decide if you'd like that on regular or consent, sir.
Anybody else from the council? Any audience communication? I see none, that'll be for consent. And you're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Now, finally, item number nine. Excited for this one. Item two zero two two zero four zero two one two, that's a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, submitted by Area Towing and Recovery Inc. These gentlemen have been waiting since just approximately seven o'clock. So, requesting to operate a vehicle tow yard at one two seven one nine Inkster Road on the west side of Inkster between the CSX Railroad and Schoolcraft Road in the northeast quarter of Section twenty-five. Your name, sir?
Shane Anders, I'm from one two seven one nine Inkster Road. I'm the owner of Area Towing and I'm here to answer any questions that anybody has in regards to this piece of property that I am proposing to develop.
Okay, Mr. Teramina, do you have any details for us?
Yeah, so, Area Towing and Recovery is proposing to set up operation. Parcel of land is on the west side of Inkster Road. This parcel measure is roughly two point six five acres. It's located at the far west end of a property that is owned by Keller Tool and Manufacturing. And this is surplus land that they have. It was previously used for vehicle storage or recreational vehicle storage. The petitioner this evening is requesting a tow yard operation that now falls under the waiver use standards. He does have all intentions of bidding on the tow, upcoming tow contract. The site provides storage for roughly three hundred and forty-three recovered vehicles. There is a small building located on the adjacent parcel, also owned by Keller Tool, I believe, and this is where the tow operators' offices would be located. That, the area surrounding the existing building that's shown here, what we have highlighted is actually where the recovery vehicles would be, recovered vehicles would be stored. This area is fully fenced, the building where they would operate is located here. I think half of the building is what they would occupy. There is paved parking around this for both customers and employees. The surface of the rear lot for the storage lot is currently gravel. That will have to be improved at least to some degree for proper storage. Lighting is proposed for that area as well and I think that's pretty much it. Site plan does show an enclosed dumpster and Planning Commission is recommending approval of the plans as submitted.
Anybody from the council, questions, comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir, for being here and thanks for investing in Livonia. With that existing building, are you renovating that building at all or leaving it the same as it currently is?
We'll make some upgrades to it. That building has been empty for probably about five years, a portion of it. It was there when they did the RV parking and storage parking and it's, that and the property itself has been vacant for about five years.
Okay, and then the actual area where you are going to store vehicles, currently that's fenced in, correct?
It currently is fenced in, yes.
Do you anticipate having to change any of that fencing or is it pretty adequate right now?
So, in most of, in almost all of my impound facilities, we opaque the entrance of the facility. My, the Planning Commission advised me that you prefer vinyl fencing in the front area. My other facilities, we opaque it with either the sheet metal steel or something like that. We do have one that does have vinyl. So, we're flexible and have no issue in following those guidelines that they provided me during the Planning Commission process.
Okay, could you tell us kind of about your business? I mean, what kind of cars you're storing, what are you doing exactly?
So, the sole purpose of this would be only if I was selected through the process to be the police impound facility for the Livonia Police Department. That is my sole focus in my business for twenty-five years. I tow for about fifteen different police departments. I have five different impound facilities throughout Wayne County and Monroe County, strictly law enforcement. So, I wouldn't be bringing an impound facility to you if I didn't win. That's not my model. It's strictly with law enforcement and that's what I do and specialize in. So, my business is based on a couple of things. We are focused on technology and more importantly, we have a unique process. Unlike most, your police departments spend a ton of resources, taxpayer dollars, managing this process. And about fifteen years ago, I invested in technology that basically took my law enforcement agencies out of the business. Their law enforcement officers no longer were doing the administrative paperwork. They reallocated them to real public safety needs, utilizing their gun and their badge to protect the citizens more than to push paperwork for a private business. And so, that's really what I'm focused on. I also am very involved in environmental, being environmental friendly. I own an environmental company and we are probably the only one in the state that can provide proof that we take all of the absorbent that's used on the crash site. If you drive around, you'll notice in a lot of cities, they leave the absorbent out for motorcycles to run over and vehicles and things like that. That eventually flows down into your stormwater drain and that ends up into our lakes and rivers. So, we started initiation about two years ago and we take...
I'm going to stop you there. So, I appreciate the detail, we don't need to go down this road.
Sure, that's fine.
At this point, I think what you're trying to convey is if you don't get the police contract for towing, this will not happen, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
Could, the petitioner, if I may, could you give us some of the other cities or townships within Wayne County you're talking about?
So, I've towed for the city of Taylor Police Department for twenty years, I'm the only vendor.
Okay. Just the cities, that's great, yeah.
The state police, I have towed for them for about twenty years. I cover all of I-75 for them, from Southfield Freeway to the Detroit border and then I also cover all of I-94 from Inkster Road all the way back to the Detroit border. I tow for all the police agencies in Monroe County. I cover the state police down there for all of I-75 and US-23. And there are a lot of little or smaller departments. The most recent one is the city of Ecorse. They got rid of their tow vendor and their police chief due to corruption and brought me in and they've outsourced the entire process so that they're not involved, their law enforcement officers are not involved in the administrative process.
Certainly, and if I may ask you then, if you don't get the towing contract, then are you not going to develop this or purchase this site?
Correct.
Because we won't know that for a while yet.
That is correct. So, I have a lease agreement to move forward contingent on the RFP process where there were only two bidders that have submitted that was opened recently last week. And so, there's just two of us bidding on it.
Sir, I don't want to get into bidding contracts and stuff like that, that's not what this is about.
Yeah, it wouldn't be an ownership then of the building, you'd just be leasing it, is what you're saying then?
Yes.
Okay, I was just confused by that, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Teramina, is there a clause in the current proposal that's been approved by the Planning Commission to limit this waiver usage to this operator?
Good question.
That is a good question.
If there is not, I would like to have that placed in there at this time. Do we have any motions from the council? Mr. McCullough?
I'll offer an approving for regular with the stipulation you just added.
Okay, do we have any audience communication in this manner? I see none, so you will have to come back and join us at the next regular meeting that'll take place on June twenty-seventh.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. Item number ten is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, two zero two two zero four zero two one three, submitted by Wade Shows Inc., requesting to conduct a carnival in the parking lot of the former Sears location, sponsored by the Livonia AM Rotary, consisting of amusement rides, games, and food concessions from July fourteen through July twenty-four of twenty twenty-two at two nine five hundred Seven Mile Road. Good evening, your names, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Joanna Herta Stee with Wade Shows and with me is Pat Tukal from Livonia Rotary.
Okay. Mr. Teramina?
Very briefly, this follows all of the procedural standards that they've operated over the last several years at this location. The parking lot of the former Sears is sponsored by the Rotary Club. Wade Shows, again, obviously is the operator. This event would run for eleven days from July fourteen through July twenty-fourth. Hours of operation, four to eleven, on Monday through Friday, four p.m. to eleven, Saturday and Sundays from twelve p.m. to eleven p.m. And then on Monday, July twenty-fifth, is when the carnival would be dismantled and removed.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
If I may, the petitioners have been doing this, as Mr. Teramina said, for many years and I really admire you as well and your business because we've never had a problem. We didn't have any ride breakdowns, we, you know, God forbid, we've never had any kind of accidents and all that kind of stuff you hear in other areas. So, you have a wonderful reputation and you run a good show and the Rotary certainly can use the money and all the success they do on it. And if nobody else wants to offer an approving, I'll be happy to do that for you this evening. Thank you for all the work you do for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the petitioners, I just got, this is a weird question. I fully support Rotary AM, you guys do a great job. This has been around for a while, it's exciting to hopefully kind of get back to a little normalcy. If there's anything we can do, I'm sure on our end, to blast it out, we will. So, thank you again for doing it. The goofy question I do have is, how do you pick the carnival games that will be at these? I'm just curious. It seems to change.
How are they chosen?
Yeah.
They're actually part of the Wade Shows family, if you will. They travel with Wade Shows all over.
Is there a way to recommend some to be at these? Because I'm really good at certain ones.
What he wants to know is, how does he win a stuffed animal?
I got to tell you, I'll make it really brief, but there was a time and this was, I literally, for a project at Lawrence Tech, made a prototype and I mastered one of the hard games and I would win on demand and then all of a sudden it was gone. I was threatened to be kicked out of the carnival a few times and that was fun, but it's kind of a fun story and then it hasn't been there. I don't even know if I want to tell you the game because...
Don't tell me the game, but I would recommend that you contact Frank Zajcak, the owner of Wade Shows because I'm sure you would have an interesting conversation with him.
He might arrest me and ban me, but no, thank you for that.
So, if I can officially provide him as a ride tester? To test any rides at any level of being put together?
I'm not going to lie.
Use yours for the entire weekend's...
There was one, the last thing I'll end this on is, there was, it was the whiffball game where you roll it up and it falls in the basket. I got to tell you this, my wife and I, who have been together now for almost twenty years, I was, I won this game and I was actually offered to bring a black pair of pants and be...
And work it?
And work it. And my girlfriend at the time said, I will never date you again if you do that. No, I was just curious.
So, you were that good? Well, that's great.
I am very good, yes.
Wow, that's insane.
So, his wife was impressed, but his girlfriend wasn't. You have an approving and Mr. McCullough and I are both done talking, do we have any audience communication?
It was good, it was good.
We have no audience communication, I think that'll be for consent, there are no objections, thank you very much. Good luck, thank you for all the work the Rotary does. A lot of the money they raise ends up back in our parks and our communities, so this is a great thing.
Yes, it does, yes.
So, thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rotary.
Item number eleven is a site plan petition from the Planning Commission, two zero two two zero three zero eight zero one, submitted by MA Designers Inc., requesting to construct in addition and remodel the interior and exterior of the retail center at three four eight zero zero Plymouth Road between, on Plymouth Road between Stark and Wayne Roads in the southwest quarter of Section twenty-eight. Your names, gentlemen?
Good evening, my name is Alex Reshuni, I'm with MA Designers Inc. I'm the five seven one zero Rouge Circle in Dearborn Heights and I'm representing the owner, Fee Ross.
My name's Ross Serianni, two five seven three four on Arbor Trail in Dearborn Heights.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to go to our Planning and Economic Development Director to explain the details of this and we'll come back to you, okay? Mr. Teramina?
Thank you, again, this is a request to expand and remodel an existing multi-tenant retail building that is on Plymouth Road, this property, relatively small site, two hundred feet by two hundred feet. The zoning is C-one local business. The existing building on the property is about seven thousand square feet. Two driveways provide ingress and egress to the site, both on Plymouth Road. The site does border single-family homes to the north. So, the expansion would occur on the east side of the building. This addition would be two stories in height. It would provide roughly four thousand six hundred square feet of additional...
It would provide roughly 4,600 square feet of additional floor space. 2,300 square feet of that would be on the first floor. That would be the retail. Another 2,300 square feet of office would be on the second floor. And then on the west side of the building, above that end cap unit, they would add another 2,300 square feet on the second level. So they're altogether adding about 6,900 square feet of floor area. This would bring the building to about 14,000 square feet altogether. That's 9,380 square feet of retail on the ground level and then another 4,600 square feet of office. There's floor plan that shows how the building would be subdivided into the tenant spaces. Five retail spaces are shown on the ground floor and then the two offices above. The zoning ordinance does require a minimum setback of 20 feet from the rear lot line. In this case, the building is only about nine or seven feet away from that wall. So building the addition to an existing non-conforming building is gonna require the approval of the zoning board of appeals. There is a six-foot-high masonry wall that separates the commercial district from the residential district, but again, it has to go to the ZBA. In terms of parking, the city's parking schedule requires or recommends 68 parking spaces. In this case, the site plan provides for 53 available parking spaces. But in determining whether or not to allow fewer parking spaces, the ordinance does allow us to consider other sources, including the Institute of Traffic Engineers' traffic or parking generation manual. In doing that, the recommendation is for 55 spaces. So again, they're at 53 spaces, so it's very close. Council does have the authority to approve the slight deficiency in this case. In terms of building materials, this is what the building would look like after construction. The roof gets completely modified. You can see it goes to a pitched roof on the two additions. The existing asphalt shingled roof gets removed and replaced with standing seam metal. The brick is used throughout the construction as well as some other materials, including a stone base. There's a canopy that provides opportunity for signage. That's something that the planning commission asked for changes and which the petitioner did do. And then along the back of the building, looking at the rooftop units and how those would be screened, in this case, they're gonna bring those off the roof and inside the building so those would not be visible from the residence to the rear. Planning commission is recommending approval. And last thing I'll just note is the landscaping, additional landscaping is going to be provided along Plymouth Road in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
If I may, to Mr. Teramina, can you help me out? I can't envision where this is at on Plymouth Road.
Yeah, so it is a-
I'm sorry, I just-
This is the old flea market. That's what I call it. I'm not sure, but it's a market that they sell a lot of old things.
Where Conrums was?
No.
No.
It's all glass in the front right now and we're gonna utilize that existing building. We're not demolishing any of it or anything like that. We are just adding to that building on one side and on the top. And even the roof is gonna stay utilized and we're just gonna, like as Mark said, take out the asphalt shingles and replace it with standing seam metal. But yeah, they sell, they sell a lot of different old, you know, furniture and lighting and all this kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah, I know what you mean now. Yeah, you've done a beautiful job on the design of the building. Do you have tenants already or no?
Do we?
Do you have people that are gonna rent?
He does have tenants in mind already for clothing store that we kind of have labeled already on there and you can go ahead and tell them any-
We only have one tenant right now, but we're trying to get better, like good ones. I'm not sure, to be honest. I have a real estate agent working on this.
Did you approach any of the neighbors? I noticed you abut those neighbors to make sure that, I know you're going up on your roof line there, two stories almost. Were you able to, have you heard anything from them or have you talked to them at all?
Spoke to any of the neighbors or anything like that?
No.
Nobody approached them, I guess, I mean?
No, nobody even mentioned any.
Okay. I don't want to cause any problems, but a lot of times they don't see it and then they come in at the voting meeting and they start, you know, being very concerned about certain things. So you may want to just let them know, the people that abut you or right behind you, you may want to just say, "Hey, we might be your new neighbors and this is what we're planning on doing." It's just good, being a good neighbor, that's all.
For sure.
It goes a lot smoother that way. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a drastic improvement from what the building currently looks at. This is for reference for anyone wondering, this is the building across the street from the Donut Town, the Burger King area, the Dunkin' Donuts right there on Plymouth Road just east of Wayne Road. You look at its current condition and the building is struggling, so I'm excited to see this move forward. Question about the dumpster enclosure, is the dumpster enclosure the same material as the new brick material that you're adding outside?
Yes, we're gonna change that to, you know, match the building.
To match the building, okay. And then what do the gates look like?
And the gates, you know, never thought about that, but it's gonna be a steel gate, a wrought iron.
Okay. And then the parking lot, do you have to, I may have missed it, are you changing the landscaping plan or are you keeping the landscaping the same and adding to it or?
No, we, well, there was some landscaping on there. I gotta brush up and it's been a while because we've been going back and forth, but most of the landscaping, I mean, 99% of the landscaping is all brand new and we complied with the planning department on that. There was only some landscaping toward the front, what I remember, and some of them were removed in order for me to replace with new landscaping. I'm not sure if I left a couple different shrubbery, but everything else is new.
Last question, do you guys anticipate starting construction this year or are you gonna wait till next year?
Oh, he wants to, he wants to start yesterday.
That's the spirit. Thank you and is there approving?
No.
No, not.
I'd be happy to offer approving if, on consent, if my colleagues have no objection.
Mr. McCullough?
Just through the chair to the petitioner, I know exactly what you're talking about. I think it's called Yesterday's Treasures and it's a consignment store. That building, as you know, is in need of a huge uplift and this is it. I appreciate everything that you're bringing to it. My concern also echoes to the second floor that you're adding, but I do like the fact that you have, there's no windows, you've got screening for the HVAC, and you're not planning on, you know, divert, deviating from this plan, correct? So there would be no windows, nothing, it would just be brick or whatever.
Yeah, just the brick.
Okay.
Oh, it's gonna be exactly the way you see it right here. We're not deviating anything.
The question that I do have, that second floor, you're looking at office space, correct?
Yes, yes. And the reason why he had that, he just wanted the appearance of the building to look a little bit different than just your straight, ordinary plaza and stuff like that.
Oh, I'm sure, I mean, compared to what it is now, this is a definite enhancement. Looking at the site, are you guys doing site enhancements to the parking as well? Are you planning on new asphalt? So this is all-
He's gonna, we're proposing to re-surface that whole-
Awesome. Well, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's great and I do think that it would go a long way to reach out to the neighbors behind you just to let them know, you know, I'm sure that they would be excited compared to what they're probably looking at right now. So that's just, that's just, you know, and I think it's great. Thank you again for investing in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Actually, my question was answered, but I would like to say I think this is, this would be a great addition. That building's quite rundown and needs to be revamped, so, yeah, that'd be good.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
One final point, I'd just like to note for the record that the two buildings over, the building is two stories as well to the left of it, just to the west of it. So I'd like that to be known. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any audience communication on this matter? I see none. Any objections to this being on consent? I see no objections for consent. You gentlemen are all set. You do not have to come back to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We'll go to item number 12, a request to approve hourly rate and holiday pay increase for the Department of Civil, from the Department of Civil Service for 2022 through 2024 seasonal laborer positions.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janine Leibel. I'm here on behalf of the Civil Service Commission and Department. We're here to request a change for the hourly rate for, and also the holiday pay for our seasonal laborers. We'd like to move it to $15 an hour to be competitive with our neighboring communities. Excuse me. And we'd like to have a cumulative rollover of hours worked in order for temporary and seasonal laborers to be able to collect holiday pay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with this wholeheartedly. It's tough getting people out there. I understand that. And I think, you know, when McDonald's and others are paying $17 an hour, this behooves us to take some action quick so that we can keep our beautiful city beautiful. So I would ask for an approving.
Anybody else from the council? I see none. Any audience communication? I see none. Is that for consent? Any objections?
That's up to you, Mr. Chair, whatever you'd like.
So that'll be on consent.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
We'll move on to item 13, request to approve an increase in compensation for administrative assistance in parks and recreation from the Civil Service Department to be in the same compensation range as other parks and recreation administrative assistants in comparable communities. Ms. Leibel, can you explain this to us?
Sure. We have, they've done some reorganization of responsibilities within their department. The person that they're looking to change the wage for is going to be responsible for several more temporary or seasonal staff in all of the scheduling and front office or front desk work at the rec center. That person, Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry, he is the only person in the city that works underneath that title of administrative assistant, so wouldn't have any impact on other departments or other divisions. The part of his work is coming because there is a change for the program supervisor or business manager and they're changing that to a recreation supervisor or business analyst to separate the duties. The person they had before was, I think, being overwhelmed by work in terms of scheduling their front desk and covering the front-end administration.
So let me ask you a question real quick, just so I can understand. Are you saying that Tom Murphy is currently under this title? That's not the case, is it? He's the building supervisor.
Hang on one minute, I may have, oh no, Mr. Murphy is the only employee who's classified as an administrative assistant.
Well, why don't you change that? Because he's not an administrative assistant. He's the building supervisor, facility manager.
That is a great question. We have some extremely outdated and outmoded job titles. We would love to change them and I will come and bother you, excuse me, I'll approach you about that at a different time, I'm so sorry.
Well, I mean, it's easier to make this change and make this argument if you're gonna call him what he really is. And I'm not trying to give you trouble, but like-
No, I don't disagree.
You know, at this point, you'd have to take it back to civil service to do that, correct?
Yes. So his current title will, or his new title will be administrative assistant, facility manager. So it'll have a kind of appendage designation.
So that's already approved?
Yes, by the Civil Service Commission.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Good point.
Anybody on the council with any questions or comments? Any motions? Mr. McCullough?
Everything with the exception of the title which you'll be working on seems to be, seems to be in order. Again, this is something, thank you for the backup with all the neighboring communities. I think it further points out that, you know, we need to continue this. So I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent if there are no objections.
Any audience communication? There is none. Yeah, I think it's worth noting that Mr. Murphy, I think the rec center is literally probably like his child. I think he's the person who was dropped off on the site before the bricks were dropped off and he's been there ever since. So that's for consent. We'll move on to 14. Request to waive the formal bidding process and approve a four-year contract with Ritter GIS from the Department of Public Works and Information Systems to provide GIS, that's Geographic Information Services, to the city of Livonia in an amount not to exceed $35,0360 annually with an option to extend for two years from budgeted funds. Mr. Rorath?
Good evening, council.
Welcome, sir. I don't think I've seen you in a bit. It's good to see you.
The money ran out, I'm back. Good to see you as well. Thank you for having me. Don Rorath, DPW Director. As you mentioned, we're before you tonight for Ritter GIS. Historically, Ritter GIS has been a very important partner for the city and our GIS in general, along with City Works and all the implementation and the switch over from Cartograph a long time ago with that. They've had numerous contracts with the city over the years and they've also helped, if you recall, with the SOL grants and the different things that we've implemented. As I mentioned, Ritter, GIS, they've been instrumental in the development of City Works, the training of our employees in City Works, coming up and programming and doing all of our crystal reports that are needed that come out of that management system. With all the changes that have happened with Miss Dig over the last three to five years, they've been very, very helpful in implementing that to get that put into City Works as well. This is gonna be a partnership with the IS department and Mr. O'Neill apologizes that he's not here tonight, but his son was gonna be out on the ball field down at Comerica Park, so I told him I would carry the load tonight. But it is both departments. We will be sharing the cost for this moving forward. And the IS department, they utilize Ritter GIS as much as DPW in a multitude of requests and different projects that they have. Ritter has the background, the necessary technical background, as well as the history with this, with our system and everything they've done in bringing it basically right up from the ground. There really isn't another company out there that could do what they do without coming in here and having a whole lot of higher costs to do that. So, you know, what we're looking for tonight is a four-year contract not to exceed $35,360 annually with the option to extend two years if mutually agreed upon. And we're asking council to waive the formal bidding process in accordance with the section 3.04.140D.4 of the Code of Ordinances as amended, because we don't feel there'll be any advantage to the city resulting from a competitive bid situation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I'm familiar with Ritter GIS. I'm sure, you know, looking over the packet, they, the amount of background and back, the work that they've done over the years, even building it up, they're an integral piece to the puzzle. The question I do have through the chair to Mr. Rorath is, their prices, obviously we're waiving the formal bidding process, in years past, did they have a huge increase compared to the contracts? Are they keeping their prices pretty much the same?
It's under 1% in what we've been dealing with them in the past.
Okay.
And just so you know, where did that number come from? We're basing that basically on, on an average of about eight hours a week of work that they're gonna do.
Perfect. Well, that was the big thing and you guys are obviously happy. They're a huge part and I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Anybody else on the council? Any audience communication? I have a question for Mr. Fisher. The way that this is worded, just so we understand this, as we approve this as a four-year contract with an option to extend, is that ever an administrative option to extend or would that have to come back to council?
We, I guess it depends on how it's written up. What would be your preference?
I think I would just like to have a touch-based moment, well, for whoever's here four years from now, just understand how it's working out and have the ability to look at that. I won't be around here, God willing. But, yeah, if we can do that with making that, any extension come back to council, that'd be appropriate. But, yeah, if we can do that with making that, any extension come back to council, that'd be appropriate. Thank you. Well, otherwise, I'm okay with it being on consent. With that, we'll move on to item number 15. Award of contract from the Department of Public Works for water main taps and service connections along with emergency water and sewer repairs at various locations throughout the city in an amount not to exceed $375,000 annually for a period of three years with an optional two-year extension from budgeted funds. Mr. Rorath?
Thank you, council. As you all know, DeAngelo has been a fantastic contractor for us for about the last 27 years. They've done an outstanding job for us, helping us with water main, new water main tap services that are going in for any of our new properties, water services, anything that we would need in that regard, emergency repairs for water and sewer, sewer repairs. They're our go-to whenever we need any kind of help at all. They've come in and helped us in water main break situations. If we have too many water main breaks, pick up the phone. Vince is here tonight from DeAngelo, if you may have any questions for him. But as I mentioned, we're looking to award this contract, DeAngelo. This went out to bid on Mitten in May and they were the only bidder to come back in. If you recall, we've extended this contract a couple of times prior. We actually sat down with them and talked about extending it again, but understanding the situation that we're in with extending contracts and going out to bid and a little bit worried about the pricing, we were very pleased that they came back and, you know, were the low bidder, the only bidder at that point in time. But we're looking for this three-year contract, not to exceed an amount of 375,000 annually, as you had mentioned, with the optional two-year extension. This would be coming from the water and sewer budgeted funds. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Oh, wow. Ms. Toy?
Oh, that's all right. That's okay. I mean, just real quick, I was just gonna say that Mr. Rorath and company has done a great job with this and since I've been here, the familiarity with them repairing the kind of systems you've had in emergency and crisis situations, if you will, has been outstanding. And through the snow, sleet and otherwise, they've been there. That's been my experience as a councilperson in this community. So I have no reservations saying, "Let's go with it." And I think, though, the president made a good point of just keeping an eyeball, you know, for this council as it proceeds in the future here.
Absolutely.
Short of that, you know, I would offer that unless Mr. Donovan would like the honors. But in all fairness, that would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to my colleague Laura Toy. The honor is all yours. Ladies first. I would just like to note that maybe the petitioner wants to come up and say hi with the lights and camera, get some glory shot real quick. But no, the company does a great job and I'm thankful to partner with organizations like them, businesses like them that work hard for a community, especially in something as serious as this. I mean, you're talking about water main breaks and really nitty-gritty work that needs to be repaired quickly. And I've been thankful to go out with DPW a few times and even from all DPW people, they've said that DeAngelo has done a good job. Not Vince's self, but the rest of the people there have done a fabulous job and looking forward to them continuing that good work for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, council. Thanks for the opportunity. We, as you all know, Livonia's been part of myself and family for 20-some years. So we look forward to keep on building this relationship and fixing your guys' problem. That's our specialty. So we've catered our company and our name to doing just that and fixing everything that no one else wants to do. So as Todd knows and many know, we do everything no one else and that's just turned into our lifestyle, so.
We just need you to move your business into Livonia.
We can't get much closer. We're only about 30 feet, 33, I think we're only 33 feet away, so.
Are there any objections to that being on consent?
Our PO box is Livonia.
I see no objections. Any audience communication? The audience has left us. I do have a question just while we're on this item, not about this contract specifically. But Mr. Rorath, can you let us know how have we been doing recently with water main breaks? I know we were losing a lot often and I've heard less. Is that correct or how are we doing?
Yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to talk about that. Just to take you back a little bit, 12 years this month for me being here in Livonia and it just seems like maybe two years. But when I first started here, we were at 190 to 200 a year, give or take, water main breaks. Since that time, bringing Jacob Rushell, bringing Tom Wilson in, bringing and working with our consultants, doing different things, actually looking at the system of what we're doing, we've dramatically reduced those water main breaks down to an average of about 110 a year right now. And for a system this size, that's pretty good. We're doing more. We're trying, as you know, we're before you with replacing valves, with replacing meter pit installation information that's allowing us to see this, to deal with these things. But we're dramatically down. Again, if we get a spike in the system or something that's being supplied to us, we have to react to it. That's just gonna happen. That's everyday life. But we are down. My goal is to get that under 100. So we're gonna keep pushing for that.
Good. Well, thank you for the update. That's very appreciated and keep up the good work. Thank you. DeAngelo, I think we have nothing further on the agenda tonight. We'll go back to the council.
Council President, if I couldn't, I'm sorry, just one comment on the prior with Ms. Leibel up here on the seasonal work. I really do appreciate that. I'm not sure if everybody is aware of what we're dealing with, but we are normally budgeted for 40 seasonal employees and we currently have six. That is absolutely detrimental to getting grass mowed, to doing the different things that we need to do to be able to fine-tune this. So we're really hoping to go out there and be able to attract some people and have our numbers go up. So I just wanted to say thank you. It's, we're struggling with that right now.
Well, we all appreciate the position that you're in. What, so some of these jobs that you have with DPW in terms of mowing the lawns and facilities, outdoor kind of care, you know, I had a neighbor who was looking for a job, a high school kid at Stevenson, and I was surprised that these jobs require you to be 18. It seems like some of these jobs a 16-year-old could do. Is that not the case?
That is the case. I'm actually working with the Civil Service Department. Historically, that has been the practice of the city. And historically, we really haven't struggled to find employees to come in and work seasonally like we are now. The reason behind that was is there's machinery and equipment that they have to run. I'm working on trying to separate that and bring in some younger employees potentially to do some of the, you know, the more busy work, some of the work that they will not have to be using equipment and that type of stuff. But I'm glad that you brought that up because that's actually something that we've talked about and we're trying to figure out a way to make sure, as those applicants come in, that we can steer them in the right direction to make those type of things happen.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, with respect to this contract, item number 15, does it also have the same term, the council consent for extension or...
I would like it to have that, yeah.
Okay, just to be clear. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We have nothing further from the council. We have no...
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Rorath. We have, we have no audience here. We'll say good evening, Livonia. Meeting is adjourned.